This conference will now be recorded.
Okay, in the last session, what we were working on, we were working on purchase order invoice creation. And at the time of invoice creation, we were stuck at a point where we were about to create the tax portion, right? And we were facing some problem related to tax. What was the table where you got the error? Inner error message, which table you got as an error?
T zero three zero.
No, partially correct, T zero three zero followed by. T zero three zero is okay, T zero three zero what? In the error message, we got the table name, right?
W, no right.
R.
Okay, T zero three zero.
Right, it was T zero three zero R and this T zero three zero R is referring to tax account determination, is that right?
Yes.
This is related to tax account determination because we did not complete a tax config, we got this error. Now, let us try to understand taxation today. Now, why we need this taxation to complete the purchasing cycle completely? Am I right? Now, if we recap what we did in the last session, let's open. We also talked about certain tables where purchase order data will get stored. What are the PO related tables?
E K K O, E K P O.
Okay, I'll go to S E sixteen N. Two tables, one is E K K O. If you go to E K K O, it is referring to purchase order header data. Now, it's been a week or more than a week, we had the last session. And I don't remember what was the purchase order which we created. And I don't need to remember it, I don't need to write down anywhere because from the system, I should be in a position to pull the information, am I right? Now tomorrow your user will tell, I want the list of all the purchase order which are created from so and so date. Or list of the purchase order which is created by particular user. Now what I will do? I'll not put any information, do you get any information where it is referring to created on and then created by? If I want my purchase order which I created, which one I should pick? Created on or created by?
Created by.
Created by, so what I will put, I'll only put my user ID. Created by, I will click on number of entries. It is giving six record, meaning in this server with my user ID, how many purchase orders are created?
Six.
Six purchase orders are created. Now here you are getting only six, but in the project, this may be more than hundred, more than one thousand, possible or not?
Yes.
Yes.
Because I may be working as an end user, my task is to create a multiple purchase order. No surprise, I would have created thousand purchase order, five thousand purchase order. Now along with the user, now I know that I wanted to look at the purchase order. Probably which is created in the last ten days, in the last two week. Or probably from June till date or May till date. Then I can put created on, like if I open the dropdown. I will select, let's say May month. Let's say from first May until today. Now can I give the date range also to pull the purchase orders created by my ID between this period?
Yes.
Now let me try to create number of entries, how many purchase orders are created in this time period?
Only one.
One.
Only one purchase order is created, enter, now let me run the report. This is the purchase order number. Now let me copy this, now assume. I look at this purchase order, but since it is a long time, I would have forgot what we did in the last session. Or even in the real environment, user might forget. Or as a consultant, you may have to look at what is done to this purchase order. Now there are multiple reports which are related to purchase order, am I right? Now there is a T code to check the transaction code, what is the T code to check a T code?
Me twenty three and.
T code to check a T code, not table. S E ninety three. S E ninety three. Okay, T S T C is related to table. Now go to this S E ninety three, this is the transaction, anything related to M M purchasing. Anything related to M M purchasing will begin from. Now if you look at the purchase order transaction code, what is the purchase order T code?
M E twenty one.
M E twenty one, now look at only the three first digits of the T code, what are the first three digits of this T code? Purchase order.
M E T N T, M E two.
M E two, now most of the purchasing reports from the M M side will begin from M E two only. Now I will put M E two, then I'll put a star. Now it is referring to multiple screens. Okay, now let me try to put M E two and it has got multiple, it is asking you to see all search result. Let me click on see all search result. Now if I look at it. You have purchase order by supplier, you have purchase order by material, you have purchase order by this and there are so many reports here. All are related to purchasing only, if you notice.
Yes.
So what I'll do, probably I will, I will look at M E two N now, purchase order by purchase order number. Currently, are we aware of purchase order number or not?
Yes.
We are aware of purchase order number, which report you will pick?
M E two N.
There are so many, but you need to understand what data you are currently aware of. Accordingly, go to the T code, don't blindly open any T code. It is always based on what information you are aware and what information you want to display. Accordingly, pick the appropriate T code, let me go to M E two one. Double click on it, this will come and click on this icon. Or press F eight on the keyboard, anything is okay, it will open that report. Okay, and first point, you'll have to put here purchasing document. In our example, purchasing document is what? Purchase order number?
Yes.
I already copied purchase order number there, I am putting this purchase order number here. And scope list is always supposed to be A L V. A L V is referring to Excel format. Whenever you put A L V, it is referring to Excel format. Just give the purchasing document, scope list is always A L V and then click on execute. Anything it is giving or nothing?
No, two to nothing.
It did not give anything, let me click on this one more time. I'll come here, let me copy the purchase order number one more time. Come here, give the purchasing document, remove this. Put A L V, click on execute. Now you got any data or not, output is coming or not coming?
Yes.
Right, now there is a subtotal, whenever you find this thick yellow lines, these are subtotals. How do you disable the subtotal? Do you find any icon related to subtotal?
Isn't that.
Top.
Top.
Right, there is an icon related to subtotal, click on this subtotal, we don't need subtotal. Sometimes it might create a confusion, just disable the subtotal by clicking on this subtotal. How do you disable it? Select this, push this this side and then click on continue, now there is no subtotal. Now here, all the totals are not appearing on the bottom, all the totals are appearing on the top. You see the yellow line on the top, not on the bottom, right? In your F H L L zero three, all your finance report total is coming at the bottom, am I right? If I pull any G L report. Where is the total, top or bottom?
Bottom.
Totals are appearing on the bottom, now your totals are highlighted by this color. Look at the background, what color is available for the total? And look at the color what is available for the total, everything is appearing with yellow. Yellow is referring to the total. Now any new logic or the same logic of your F I report to M M report? Same logic, right? Make sure when you look at the different reports, don't get confused. By looking at the output, by looking at the data, don't get confused. Understand logically what data is coming and how you need to analyze the data, how you need to look at the data and read the data. Come here, go right side, this is your purchase order value twenty five thousand. If you come right side, there is something called. What is this? Order quantity is how much? Order quantity is one. And target quantity is zero and open target quantity is how much?
Zero.
Zero.
Zero, meaning nothing to be received, target means to be received, nothing is, nothing is to be received, meaning it is already received. Alright, now still to be delivered quantity how much? Still to be delivered zero means material is already delivered or not for this purchase order?
Not delivered.
Already delivered, right?
Delivered, yes.
If it is not delivered, still to be delivered, will update the quantity. If it is zero, purchase order is already delivered. Meaning whatever you ordered is already delivered, is already received. Product is received or service is received. Now to be delivered value, when there is nothing to be delivered, do you find any value to be delivered?
No.
No, right? Nothing. And did you book the invoice for the purchase order or not yet?
Not yet.
As we understood in the last session, we were facing a difficulty on the tax. And we could not complete the invoice booking because we wanted to understand the tax before we proceed with the invoice booking. Now if you look at this, this is what? Still to be invoiced quantity how much?
One.
One quantity is already invoiced? Meaning purchase order invoice is booked or not booked?
Not booked.
Not booked. What will be the invoice value which is to be booked, still to be invoiced value twenty five thousand? At least you are able to get some basic understanding from the report? Yes, no?
Yes.
By looking into this report, if you put the purchase order number, are you able to understand what is the purchase order quantity? What is the purchase order value? How much is received, how much is to be received, how much is invoiced, how much is to be invoiced? You can simply take purchase order quantity, purchase order value and then you look at this. To be delivered quantity, to be delivered value, to be, to be invoiced quantity, to be invoiced value. Easily understandable or not?
Yes.
And this is very, very important for us as a Fico consultant reason. When you are working on any issue related to purchase order or when you are part of any integration testing with M M consultant. You cannot every time ask or expect M M consultant to look into it, as a Fico, you should be in a position to look into it. At least understand what is happening here. Now as per our understanding, purchase order, G R N is completed, invoice is pending, is this the correct understanding? From this purchase order report, is my understanding correct? G R N is completed, invoice is pending, yes, no?
We can get it from purchase order history also, right?
But if you have hundred invoices, hundred purchase order, you cannot go one by one hundred times, right?
Okay, okay.
Right, now we have only one purchase order because we are understanding the concept. But when you see it from a project point of view, there may be so many invoices, so many G R Ns, so many P Os.
Right.
Right, so we need to ensure how you will get into this system, how you will guide the user. Now I will come back to this purchase order. Now if I want to display the purchase order, I will select the purchase order, this line item. Let me see if this is a drill down. When you are talking about a drill down, what are we referring to? If I double click, if it is taking me to another screen, this is the drill down? If I double click on this line item, if I am taking into another screen. Or if system is redirecting me to another screen, can I call it as a drill down or not?
Yes.
Right, now let me try to double click on this. Anything is happening?
No.
Nothing is happening, nothing is happening. But on this screen, anywhere do you find purchase order number on the layout? Do you find purchase order number on this output layout or not?
No.
It is not there, now first let me include purchase order number in the layout, to do it, where I should go?
Change layout. Change layout.
Change layout, again same logic what you understood before. Here what I need to select for purchase order number?
Purchase document. Purchase document.
Purchasing document, now slowly you need to ensure terminologies are keep fluctuating. Make, don't search by purchase order number and don't tell. Please tell me where is purchase order number here, I am not able to add purchase order number, sometimes user will also tell. I am trying to add P O number, but I don't find P O number, can you help me? Then you have to tell the user, please add purchasing document, it will pull or it is referring to P O number. Let me add this, I want it on the first position. Keep this here. Where it came, down, I'll take it on the completed top. This is here, continue, now you got the purchase order number?
Yes.
Now I want it to be default every time, I don't want to add it every time, can I save it as my layout?
Save, yeah.
Right, click on this, save as layout, I'll keep it my name. User specific. And then default, continue. Let me verify, come back. Now I'll pull the report one more time, execute. Purchase order number. This will be what? Scope list, A L V.
A L V.
Okay, if I put best only, let's see. Best is not giving the best output, right?
Yes.
Yes.
Output is not best, come back. And give this. And this should be what? Always?
A L V.
A L V.
A L V.
Now whenever you come to this report, by default, it is best. Now user will tell, I don't want best, I want it to be A L V by default. When you are telling me not to use best, why system is giving me best? Alright, now if I put A L V, it is not coming, if I come back, it is disappearing, then you may have to. Create this as a default parameter through the basis, you'll have to inform the basis consultant, they will set it up as a default parameter. Or you'll have to create a variant with this A L V. Now I'll keep this A L V, click on execute. Now you get the Excel output, this is like Excel sheet, right? You can download this into Excel sheet, if you put best, output is not in the Excel format. If you put A L V, it is in the Excel format, best is not Excel format. Now I have the purchase order number, from here if I wanted to display the purchase order, let me try to double click on P O number.
There is no underline, right?
No underline, if I double click on purchase order number, is system taking us to the purchase order display screen or not?
Yes.
Meaning you cannot double click on wherever you want, sometimes users will tell, when you double click, it is opening, when I double click, it is not opening. There is no magic here, you just need to look at where you need to exactly double click, where you need to double click? Anywhere on the screen or on particular field?
Purchase document number, P O number.
On the particular field which means purchase order number, if you double click. It will take you to the purchase order screen, meaning user does not have to go to M E twenty three N. Copy the purchase order number, click on other purchase order, paste it, enter it, not required. When you are working in a project, the way you are opening the purchase order, the way you are looking at the screen. Everything will be monitored, the way you are opening the screen will reveal what is your level of understanding, what is your experience on the system. You don't need to tell anything, the way you are performing, the way you are accessing the system, everything will reveal the output. Now here, what I need to do, now my target is to understand what happened to this purchase order, to do it? Minimize the header, minimize the second one also, go to item details. In the item details, if any entry is created against purchase order. If any entry is created against purchase order or if any subsequent document is created against purchase order. Now you will find a tab which is automatically enabled called as purchase order history. P O history or purchase order history, it will track all the information whatever happened to the P O. Now you can see here, W E is here, what is W E?
Goods received.
Down below you will see goods reset. Okay, down below you can see the goods reset. Now quantity is one, one received, is there any amount or no amount?
No amount. No amount.
Quantity updated, amount not updated means G R, valued, G R, non-valued.
G R, non-valued.
This is G R, non-valued. Now if I want to display the material document, now can I double click on this material document? Now there is an underline or not?
Yes.
Yes, there is an underline, if you take your cursor there, it is becoming a hand. This I think everybody would have seen on your Google also, right?
Yes.
Internet explorer everywhere, this is a hyperlink. Do I need to double click or single click is enough?
Single click, yeah.
Single click is enough. Single click is enough, let me click on this material document, I did a single click, it is opening. The material document, now from purchase order report, I am able to come to purchase order display. From purchase order display, I am able to open material document. Now you are working as a Fico consultant and you are in the. Stage where you are performing integration testing. System integration testing or integration testing, now in this integration testing, what? M M consultant will do is, M M consultant will create a purchase order. Now in this example, which purchase order is created? Asset, material or service?
Asset.
In this example, asset purchase order is created, for asset purchase order, you need to understand. Because M M consultant will simply copy the purchase order number like this. And M M consultant will send an email. He will send the P O number. And he will write an email, dear Fico consultant, kindly confirm the accounting for the below purchase order, that's it. Because as a Fico consultant in your project, you need to ensure for every M M scenario, you are supposed to. Return, you are supposed to provide return confirmation to the M M consultant stating accounting is validated, everything is okay. Because M M consultant cannot validate the accounting, am I right?
Yes.
What M M will do is, they will only create a purchase order, they will do the G R N, they will only book the invoice. Full cycle is executed by M M, you don't do anything in the integration testing. Tomorrow when somebody is asking, don't tell you did G R N, don't tell you created purchase order, don't tell you booked invoice, nothing you will do it. Everything, invoice creation, G R N creation, purchase order creation, everything is performed by M M consultant. In the email, they will give you this purchase order number. Sometimes they will give purchase order number, sometimes they will also give you G R N number, invoice number, depending on the M M consultant. But for you, purchase order number is sufficient to track everything? Right, for us, P O number is enough, now what you need to do, assuming I am in a project, I'll copy this. I will come out from this screen. I want this purchase order number to be validated and to be confirmed as accounting is okay. What I need to do first, I have to display the purchase order?
Yes.
T code where I should display the purchase order?
M E twenty three.
You'll have to go to M E twenty three N, I will go to M E twenty three N. Now you have to open the purchase order, by default, the system will open the last opened or last viewed purchase order. It is your responsibility to ensure, click on this icon, other purchase order. Can you see this icon?
Yes.
Click on this other purchase order. And then remove this purchase order, put your purchase order number, make sure radio button is purchase order. Press enter or click on other document. Now it will open this purchase order. Look at purchase organization, all this information from the header level. And then by looking at the order type, you will get to know. In the real time as we discussed, if it is asset purchase order, it will be N B or it will be a custom document type.
Custom document.
It will be a custom document type, starting from set maybe. Z P O one or whatever it will be, starting from set and you have to collect the purchase order type from the M M consultant and make a note somewhere. Your responsibility to do all these things, don't tell, this is M M responsibility, they will do it, you have to understand this. If you do not know what purchase order is this, how you will validate the accounting, am I correct? Just like that, don't do it, tomorrow somebody might ask in your interview. Can you please tell me how you will perform the unit testing or what was your role exactly in the integration testing? Somebody might ask, can you please explain the process of functional consultant or role of a functional consultant in F I M M integration? Then you'll have to tell. In our project or in my previous assignment, in my current assignment, we received the purchase order numbers from the M M consultant through an email. We went through each purchase order, I went to M E twenty three N, displayed the purchase order. Ensured the mode of purchase order or type of a purchase order through the purchase order type. You tell something, Z zero zero one is used for Capex purchase order in my project, anything you tell, it is okay. But it has to be Z series, starting from Z because it will be a custom type. And make sure you went inside the. This one, header, you ensured company code, purchase organization. And go to display, this is asset purchase order, point number one, purchase order type. Point number two, account assignment category A, is this right? And after this, if you scroll down, look at the item category, this is asset purchase. Go to account assignment, account assignment is telling you the asset number. And they will also ask you, in case of a Capex purchase order, where do you maintain asset number? Where is asset number maintained, under account assignment? Right, these points you are specifically targeted in your interview, they will pinpoint to put this kind of questions, they just want you to tell. Please tell me where asset number is maintained in the purchase order. You cannot tell asset number is maintained in purchase order because the question itself, where is it in purchase order? Then you'll have to specify a little, under item, inside account assignment category tab. And here you'll have to tell, here it is maintained, they will also ask which this purchase order. Asset number will represent which G L account, is this asset G L account or asset technical clearing G L account?
Asset technical clearing.
Asset technical clearing G L account, why asset technical clearing G L account? Reason, whenever you capitalize any asset in Spur Hana system, it will post two entries. One under valuation view and one under.
Operational view.
Operational view.
When we give the number, then it will automatically pick all the details, right?
Correct, everything will come automatic.
Okay.
Okay, and now what you need to do, once you get this number, you'll have to ensure, okay, when you record the accounting. Okay, and now what you need to do, once you get this number, you'll have to ensure, okay, when you record the accounting entry for invoice. System will pass valuation view entry separate, operational view entry separate. Now the same thing, whatever we did F dash ninety, will appear here also. Now, do you get G R I R clearing account for asset purchase order invoice or you don't get G R I R clearing?
Will not get.
We will get or we will not get?
We will get.
G R I R should become zero or it should not become zero? Is this only G R I R account or it is clearly G R I R clearing account?
This is clearing account. Clearing account.
G R I R clearing account, clearing account means open item, cleared item, plus and minus, it should be zero.
Yes. Yes.
Now, you already did G R N for this purchase order or you did not do G R N for this purchase order? G R N is already done, at the time of G R N, any amount posted to accounting or nothing is posted to accounting. Any value or.
Only quantity.
Zero.
No postings.
Only quantity, value is not posted, if there is any value in G R N, then only it will go to G R I R clearing account. Now when there is no entry in G R N, is your G R I R clearing account updated or not updated?
Not updated. Not updated.
Not updated, when there is no G R I R clearing account on the G R N, do you get the G R I R clearing on the invoice?
No.
You will not get, because G R I R must become zero. If there is no G R I R on the G R N, it will not come on the invoice. Straight forward, am I right?
Yes.
Because there is no accounting entry in G R N, there is no G R I R posting. When there is no G R I R posting at the time of G R N, there will be no G R I R posting at the time of invoice also.
Correct.
Right, now to display this material document, click on this material document, it will open the G R N entry. Now this, this G R N entry is referring to like this. Now on this G R N entry, if there is any accounting or not, on the same screen, do you get an option called F I document?
Yes.
Here there is an option called F I document, if this G R N is posted to accounting, you will get accounting entry, F I document. If you click on F I document, let's see what will happen. What message at the bottom?
No subsequent document found in accounting.
No subsequent document found in accounting, you have to use this terminology called subsequent document. Subsequent document means, it is a follow-on document, meaning document is generated after purchase order. Am I correct? G R N is coming first or purchase order is coming first?
Purchase order.
Purchase order is coming first, after purchase order, whatever comes, it is a subsequent document. Or follow-on document, this terminology we will be using in your integration related entries, especially for M M and S T. Tomorrow somebody might ask, what do you mean by subsequent document? And you should not tell, I do not know what is a subsequent document. Or somebody might ask, what subsequent documents will be generated from purchase order? What are the subsequent document for the purchase order?
F I document.
G R and I R. G R and I R is the subsequent document, now in this subsequent document of purchase order, is there any accounting or no accounting?
No accounting.
No accounting, system generated, only material document, not accounting document. Now come back. Clear till here, opening the purchase order from the report, displaying the purchase order, looking at the purchase order history. Understanding whether it is valued and non-valued, displaying the material document, looking at the accounting document, clear?
Ajay, you said for P O only the material document number will be generated, right, the last sentence which is just said a few seconds.
Correct, now your material will trigger the accounting, if it is valued, since it is not valued, when you click on F I document, nothing is coming. Because there is no value rate, value is zero. Reason account, so your asset is capitalized at the time of invoice for Capex P O. Now we understood so far. Let's say. P O header, table is what?
E K Q.
E K Q. P O item?
E K P O. E K P O.
E K P O. Now after purchase order, what next, G R N?
Yeah, goods.
In G R N, what document is coming, accounting document or material document?
Material document. Material.
Material document, right, now you'll have to put. Material document. Header, we also get material document item?
Yes.
What are these tables? For your accounting document header, accounting document line item, what are the tables, accounting header? B K P F, B sec, okay, now I'll go to B K P F table. I'll copy the purchase order number first, I'll go to B K P F. B K P F is what, accounting document? Header, now we are looking for material document, I will simply replace B with M. Now M K P F is becoming a material document header.
Okay, yes.
Right?
Yes.
Now the other one is your B sec. Now what I did previously, I replaced B with M, I got material, here also can we try the same, replace B with M? Same thing is happening?
Yes. Yes.
Now what tables can I put this here? Material document header. This is important for a Fico consultant to understand, reason I'll tell you why it is important. Okay, now as per our understanding, your complete P two P cycle. Or your complete F I M M integration is based on what, purchase order number?
Yes.
So what I need to do when I go to this. I need to ensure, I will pull the data maybe from header. Material document header, I'll be able to pull the information based on the purchase order. First, we need to understand where is the purchase order, scroll down. Do you find any purchase order here?
No. No sir.
No. Then what I will do? I will first look at the data based on the my user ID. Sometimes you will get created by, but here there is no created by, it is username, am I right? Depending on the table, depending on the screen, same field but it is represented with a different name, in the previous screen. Where you were looking at the purchase order, it was mentioned with entered by or created by, now it is entered as username.
Yes.
Right, now username is mine. On, enter down, let me give the date range from first to eleventh. Number of entries, how many G R Ns I posted, only one?
One. One.
You are able to get the one, okay, now let me look at the report. If I look at the report, observe carefully, whether you are able to see any purchase order number here. The target is whether you get purchase order number on the material document header or not. Go right side. Did you get P O number anywhere?
No.
Not there, so based on the purchase order number, if you wanted to find out the material document number or G R N information. Can we directly go to M K P F?
No, no.
Because in M K P F, there is no field called purchase order, tomorrow somebody might ask these questions in your interview. They just want you to tell the process, how you will connect G R N number from the table based on the purchase order, that's it. Can you please tell me how you will pull the G R N details from the table based on the purchase order, that's it. And if you are able to connect these tables, if you are able to tell this table, you will be okay, if not, not okay. Now having said, I have X Y Z years of experience, I was part of M M integration, I know P two P cycle. Purchase order G R and everything, can I say I forgot, can I say I don't know, I'm not sure, I'm not aware? Can I keep quiet? No, right? And when you are part of integration testing, these are all mandatory. Come back, now G R N line item data?
M sec.
Go to M sec. Put M sec here, now we are referring to purchase order, scroll down. Check if you get purchase order number anywhere. There are so many fields, let me try to find. Do you get purchase order number here?
Yes.
What is the field name for the purchase order?
E B E L N.
E, B, E, L N, and these certain keywords from selected tables also we need to understand. In your interview, after you are telling everything, if the interviewer is not convinced yet. Whether this candidate is really aware or he or she just prepared, by heart and then telling, they will put one more question. What is the technical name for purchase order? They expect you to tell E B E L N. If you do not know, they expect you to tell confidently, sorry, I don't remember. But don't act innovatively that I'm thinking I'm not able to recollect, will give you Oscar performance, nobody will get selected. If you're not sure, tell a friend I don't remember, no need for you to remember everything, if you don't remember, tell that I'm not able to recollect now. It is okay, but if you act, if you think innovatively and trying to say I'm not able to recollect. Then other person will easily catch. Now here can I put purchase order number? I will put purchase order number, I will click on number of entries, are we getting the data or not?
Yes.
One record, execute this. Now you got the data here, from the M sec table, based on the purchase order, you are getting what, material document and material document here?
Yes.
Right, now you have to first take the purchase order number, pass the purchase order number in M sec table. Get material document number, material here, copy this material document number, go to which table?
M K P F. M K P F.
Go to M K P F table, in the M K P F table, there are two key fields, material document, material document here. Did we get both the details from the M sec table?
Yes. Yes.
Put material document number, what was the material year? Put twenty twenty five, click on execute. Now you got the data?
Yes.
You got the data, now all these things you may have to do it in your project, as a Fico consultant, you cannot tell, this is not my task. You may have to work on this, because in some situations, you may be working on different, different custom reports. Part of your R I S F object. When you are working on different, different custom reports on the R I S F object, you need to ensure, how you are going to extract the data? And how you are going to connect the tables, now we are all supposed to write F S functional specification?
Yes.
When you are writing functional specification, this is how you have to connect the data. Take a simple, simple example, take purchase order, create an entry. Come back reverse, based on the purchase order, how do I get the data, now so far whatever you got it, is there any accounting entry or no accounting entry?
No accounting entry, only material.
No accounting entry, right, this is the material document number. After getting this, from this material document number, are we supposed to to get accounting document number also or not?
Yes.
This is not the actual accounting entry rate, this is only the material entry, from the material entry, we are supposed to to get accounting entry. Now there is one more pending point here, connecting material document number with accounting document. In this example, can we connect or we cannot connect?
We cannot connect.
We cannot connect. In this example, we cannot connect because it is a G R, non-valued, no accounting entry posted. Now keep this point open, when we post next accounting entry for material P O or service P O. Where accounting is posted at the time of a G R N, we will connect it. We will take the purchase order, we will connect the material document, from the material document, we will see how you will connect accounting document. And tomorrow when you write any functional specification, this is what you have to do, exactly copy paste. Tomorrow when somebody is asking, this is what you need to tell, exactly copy paste, no additions, no modifications. Now I will come back. Now I also wanted to know whether there is any invoice created against this purchase order or not. Now, next one is here. Logistics. Invoice. Header and then logistics invoice item. Tables.
M S I S, M S A S.
No, no. We had M sec. Can I put R sec here? Alright, R sec is coming here, let me put R sec here. Now. This one. Item. Can I try R K P F? Okay, I'll put B K P F, accounting header, M K P F, material document header. R K P F. This is reservation. But are we looking for reservation? Are we looking for reservation?
No. No, no.
Logistics.
For reservation rate, we are looking for. Material document, sorry, invoice document number, is this the table or this is not the table?
This is not. This is not a table.
This is not the table. I'll put R B K P, is this the one?
Yes.
Right, this is what we are looking for, I'll copy R B K P, then I'll put this here. Now are these tables clear?
Sir, all these are having compatibility views, so that means these are available in A C docker or how it is?
Yeah, yeah, A C docker, these are available.
Okay, sir, okay.
Okay, now, what I will do, I'll put this in the header. Let us look at if there is any purchase order. I will put. Purchase, here we are not able to find the purchase order, but this is not the right way to search. Purchase order number will have a fixed field name, technical name, what was that?
Ben. E B E L N.
E B E L N, click on this get field, pass this information, E B E L N. Press enter, if it is available, it will take the first position, if it is not part of the table, it is not appearing. Now in the header, it is not there, purchase order number, now let me go to line item, where is the line item table? For invoice? R sec, go to R sec. Simply you can find purchase order directly, it is available, purchasing the document, this. Name may be different, but if you look at it, technical name is the same, E B E L N. Simply you can pass E B E L N here, if it is available, it will take the first position here. Put the purchase order number, ending with two eighty three, click on number of entries, if no data found. Meaning against this purchase order, invoice is booked or not yet booked?
Not yet booked.
Not yet booked. Against this purchase order, invoice is currently not yet booked, we understood, we are about. Against this purchase order, invoice is currently not yet booked, we understood, we are about to book the invoice, because of the tax error, we were stuck.
Correct.
Yes.
So far clear how we connected every point from purchase order till invoice?
Yes.
Alright, now your purchase order number is getting updated in the line item table, not in the header table of subsequent document, am I correct? Header. P O. Not applicable, here P O is available. Here also, P O not applicable, here P O is applicable, am I right?
Yes.
Alright, now let us copy the purchase order number, go back to the place where exactly we were stuck in the last session. What I will do, I will go to invoice booking, T code for booking, P O invoice or logistics invoice?
M I R O.
M I R O. M I R O.
M I R O, Miro or M I R O, go to this. While booking it, make sure this is your company code. First point, this is your company code, sometimes people will ask, in Miro screen, how do you change company code? Do you have any option to update company code here?
Hmm, no.
Top, enter incoming invoice, company code A P nine zero, for example, my company code is A P seven zero. Where can I change this? Do you find any option where company code is available? There is company code, but this is cleared out.
Guys, can you please go on the mute?
Right, this field is not available, now you need to understand how this is editable, how you can change company code on the M I R O screen, whenever this is not available, what you do is, go to the top menu, look at the header options. First one invoice document, do you find company code?
No.
No company code, go to edit, do you find company code?
Yes, switch company code.
Switch company code or shortcut key is F seven. Sometimes your user will tell, I am not able to change company code here. And when your user is not able to find the option here, you may be telling a try in invoice document, try in edit, try in go to, they will not be able to understand, simply what you need to tell, tell them to press function F seven or F seven on the keyboard, am I right?
Yes, sir.
If I press F seven on the keyboard, it is giving a pop-up, enter company code. Now can I change the company code here? For example, if I pick any company code. Now currently this is A P nine zero, if I take, let's say seventeen ten, enter. Now company code is changed to seventeen ten. Am I right? Now I will come back. I will reopen the screen again, M I R O, enter. Now this is a seventeen ten, meaning system is picking the company code which was used last time by the user. Now how I have to change it again? Same option. F seven. Change this to A P nine zero. And then put this, now invoice state, invoice state I have to enter manually or I have to take it from the physical invoice copy given by the vendor.
Physical invoice copy.
From physical invoice copy, we need to get take. One minute. Invoice state must be given. In the physical copy of the invoice provided by vendor, from there you have to pick this, for example, it is zero five, zero six, twenty twenty five, and you have to ensure, look at the purchase order date. If I wanted to find out my purchase order date, this is my purchase order date. Is this correct?
Yes.
Yes.
Now my invoice state must be greater than purchase order date, this is also correct?
Yes.
Yes.
And my invoice date must be greater than my G R N date, this is also correct?
Yes.
Yes.
Meaning left and right, don't put the dates whatever comes in your mind, while booking the invoice, while creating the scenario, take a single purchase order only, but understand all the key points. Now my invoice must be booked on or after thirty first March, thirty first May twenty twenty five, am I correct? For example, fifth June is what the invoice date mentioned on the vendor invoice, but I am updating the data today. After approval and all, I am doing this, I will put current date as posting date, these two dates can be different or they have to be the same.
Different. This can be.
They can be different, there is no rule, these two must be same. Okay, now in the reference, are we supposed to put purchase order number or are we supposed to put invoice number given in the vendor physical invoice copy?
invoice number.
Right, you have to take invoice number given in the physical invoice copy provided by the vendor. Not purchase order number, for example, vendor had given invoice number something like this, you will have to put the same invoice number. Okay, and then put the amount, currently on the invoice, you are able to find somewhere around twenty five thousand, put twenty five thousand and below, you will have to put purchase order number. Ending with the two eighty three, just press enter. Now if you look at this information, you are able to find one point, this is the header data, this is the line item data?
Yes.
Now while booking the invoice, P O number are you giving in header or are you giving in the line item?
Line item.
Line item, that is the reason when you look at the table, P O number is not part of the header table, it is part of the line item table because of the data how you are entering in the system, am I right?
Yes.
The way you enter the data, in the similar way, it is updated in the table. Tomorrow somebody might ask why it is not part of the header, why it is part of this table, don't tell, I do not know tell, while booking the invoice, we input the P O number at the line item level, as a result, it is getting updated in so and so table. Though your answers are correct, sometimes people may be finding it a little tricky to believe you. How come this candidate is answering everything? Because if you answer everything, that is also a big problem, right? If you don't answer, that is a problem, if you answer, that is also a problem sometimes. Right, so people will put different cross question, that is why you have to leave certain things in the interview, certain things you tell purposefully, I have not worked on it, I do not know, it is okay. But don't answer everything, because of different factors, because of different reasons, answering everything is also question mark, will give additional doubts to the interviewer.
Correct, sir, I took interview, David studied, so the candidate was answering each and everything in F I. I got confused, then I put one more, you know, screening round.
Yeah, yeah, this is common, because now when you go to the market, different things are happening and you will have to be smart enough. Okay, now what we will do here?
So can you tell me the which table you are talking about?
Invoice related table. Okay, now we came, now we need to open the period, periods are not opened, for posting period variant A P nine zero, period number six is not open, let me open the period. O B fifty two. Now there is one more point which you will have to understand here, in general, when you go to O B fifty two, this is opening or not opening?
Opening.
Opening, variant is A P nine zero, this is okay, you are able to modify or not able to modify?
Able to modify.
You are able to modify, now one point that you will have to understand here. I will come down. Write down. Posting period, three points. T code is what?
O B fifty.
O B fifty two.
Other than O B fifty two, there are other T codes also for this. I am not writing it, you identify and then write down here. Right, O B fifty two, then I will put slash, question mark, slash question mark, there are two more T codes which will be used in the project. Okay. You can easily identify this, if not, I will tell you tomorrow. No, no.
Material period.
Not material. No, 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 only this screen I am referring to, you can open this screen with another T codes also.
S L R, S L R.
S L R and then there is another T code also, just identify, so that you will find something to work after the class. Okay, point number one. This one, now everybody is aware, in any project, development is modifiable client or non-modifiable client?
Modifiable.
Modifiable client.
Development. Development is two hundred.
Non-modifiable.
When you perform.
Non-modifiable.
Non-modifiable.
Non-modifiable client, what about quality?
Non-modifiable.
Non-modifiable client, now I am referring to this, I will come to O B fifty two. Okay, I will put this. Now I will change from five to six. If client is modifiable, when I click on save, I get a T R. This is client modifiable, am I correct?
Yeah.
Yes.
Right? Now if client is non-modifiable, can I save this, first of all, can I edit this screen?
No.
No.
No, grayed out.
When I go to O B fifty two, I get the pop-up, when I put this, but this will come in this way. I cannot edit anything here. So in your quality system, in your development system, if somebody is asking a question in your interview, how did you open or how do you open posting period in the quality system, don't blindly tell O B fifty two. Am I correct?
Program, the program we can do it.
Right, O B fifty two, you will not do it in the project because it is non-modifiable client, what you will have to do, you have to go to a program. Any idea what is the program? Table, sorry, T code to look at the program, execute the program, as a functional consultant.
S A thirty eight.
S A thirty eight, don't tell S E thirty eight, always mention S A thirty eight. Okay, S E is used by A B A, S A is used by functional, now here you will get something called R O F O B. Something will end with five to double zero, this one. Right? And click on execute. It is taking you to this screen. Okay, put this program here. Now what is your posting period variant?
A P nine.
A P nine zero. Account type, you want everything, leave it blank, blank in S A P is referring to, everything is included, am I clear? Blank means everything is included, account type, blank, everything is included, period number one, period number two, period number three, this is referring to O B fifty two. You have three sets here. Set number one, set number two, set number three, accounting, special period and then costing, secondary cost.
Yes.
Right, now you have in the table also three sets. In the program also, period one, period two, period three. Now I wanted to open the period from period, let's say last month, from five twenty twenty five to six twenty twenty five. Special period, C O related period, I am not currently touching, I will keep this and down below, do I have the test run? This is to ensure if it is opened successfully or not. Keep the test run, click on execute. System is able to open or not, test run is okay or not okay?
Okay.
Test run is okay, right, it is, it will be like this, five to six, now currently it is what? Four to five, it will be okay or not okay, this is what we wanted, right? Now, third one, you have to open or you have to look at the table, T code, program and then table. Now to find out.
Sorry, if I want back period, previous period, is it possible?
Possible, do whatever you want from here, this is accounting period, right, put whatever number you want, it will update. You can update from nineteen forty seven also, it is okay, any year, any period is okay. Now to find out the table, select any one field, click on this question mark. Go to this fourth option, technical information. Table is what, remove the V underscore, it is view, it is what, T zero zero one B? Am I correct? If I go to T zero zero one B. Now I will go to table, table is where? S E sixteen N, what was the table? T zero zero one B? Enter, posting period, what is your posting period variant? A P nine zero, execute. In your quality system, in your development system, if somebody is asking how do you open period, if somebody is telling O B fifty two, then go, am I right? If somebody is telling O B fifty two, put immediate question, is your client development, is your client quality modifiable, non-modifiable? If that is non-modifiable, then you put a question, then how do you open the period in a non-modifiable client? Because it will trigger a T R, am I right? Yes, no? Whenever you save it, is this going to ask a T R or not?
Yes.
Now here, on the top, you will get the table name or not? Slowly you need to make sure these points are observing. Slowly make sure different points you are able to observe. Now cancel it. Now if it is a quality system, is this how you open the period, O B fifty two, or you will go to program and then open the period?
Program and open.
Program and open.
You will have to go to the program, S A thirty eight. Okay, program name is what, R F O B five to double zero. Execute, give your variant A P nine zero. Period number one, for your accounting, regular periods one to twelve. I want period five and six to be opened. Account type blank is referring to every account type, account number blank is referring to everything, meaning no masking is allowed, everything is updated. Come down. Keep the test run first, click on execute, look at the output, don't blindly execute without a test run. Strictly execute a test run, wherever you find a test run tick mark, you have to be very, very careful there, don't blindly execute, update run without checking the output. Ensure test run is enabled, look at the output, come back, be conscious, make sure you did it a test run and don't blindly tell, please try now. Most commonly, we will make this mistake because you will get this request from other module consultant. M M may be doing something, S D may be doing something, some other consultant may be doing something, they get this error, they will send an email to you, they will ping you on Teams, they will tell, dear consultant, can you please open the period? O B fifty two, you will not be able to open. And after joining a new company, don't Google it, don't ask somebody, I don't know why O B fifty two is not working, it will not work. And you are supposed to know this. And come to this.
We have proved S A thirty eight only, right?
S A thirty eight only, make sure test run is successful, remove the test run, execute, only then confirm. Sometimes we execute a test run, we see the output, we will reply, please check now, again they will come back, still not working, because you did it a test run. And you have to be careful, don't get over excited, remove the test run, click on execute one more time, look at the output and then immediately go to table, if you refresh the table, it should be updated from four five, four five will be replaced with five and six?
Sir.
Right, I will go refresh the data, now it is updated or not, five, six? Is this correct? Table is updated, even if you go back to O B fifty two. Table is updated, even if you go back to O B fifty-two. Result, even if you go to O B fifty-two. A P nine zero. Updated here also, five and six? Okay, this is done, now once this is done, come back here, press enter, make sure this error is gone. Now this is giving one more message, allowed posting period is only five and four. Now the first error, whatever we got, is from the accounting posting period. Now this one, whatever you are getting, is logistics posting period, now you will have to remember two points here. When you come back to this, we updated purchase order table, you updated material documented table. You also updated logistics documented table, are this accounting table or logistics M M table?
Logistics M M table.
These are logistics M M table, for these two, there is no accounting table, am I correct?
Yes.
For these two, you have. B K P F B sec, am I right? For these two also same, B K P F B sec, yes or no?
Yes.
First error, whatever you got, wherever you opened now, O B fifty-two, R F O B five to double zero. Is to update this table, is to allow the entry to this table, accounting posting table. Now, this is clear, this table update is based on the O B fifty-two, now period number six is allowed. This error is gone, now you are getting one more error, is to update these tables. Am I right? Logistics table?
Correct.
Now, table is what? T, what was the table that we used now? T zero zero one B.
Ajay, can you also write S A thirty-eight here?
Sir, in every project like the, every time the F I consultant only will change the period.
Accounting period.
Yeah, accounting.
If I can, yeah. Not in production, development quality, production, it will be done by the user, not by us. Okay, now this is related to your accounting. Now posting period, you will also get from the. Posting period, logistics.
Sir, you know, posting, prior to P O, P O update, system is allowed to, for posting, for the invoice, by mistake.
In standard it will allow and this is part of the enhancement. You have the rise of object rate, system control, this will be taken care by the M M side. M M consultant will put the restriction control for M M, your G R N dates and then your invoice date.
Okay.
Okay, this is accounting, F I consultant. F I. Consultant. This is F I consultant. And this is your. M M consultant. Okay, now, T code is what?
M M P V. M M P V. M M P V.
M M P V.
To check or to update M M P V?
To check is M M R V, to update M M P V.
This is to check. Okay, to update. M M P V, to check, M M R V.
M M R V.
First, let us check. Okay, in your F I, to check, to update, both are O B fifty-two, display change, am I correct?
Yes.
I mean, if I go to O B fifty-two. If I put this. This is to update, where I can edit the data. This is change mode. This is display mode, both are on the same screen or two different screens?
Same screen.
Both are same screen for F I posting, but when it comes to M M posting, logistics posting, both are different. Now, go to. M M R V first, enter, M M R V is allow posting period. Now give your company code, press enter, what is the current period here?
Five, twenty twenty-five.
Five, in M M, only two periods are allowed, current period and then previous period. And M M, you can only go forward, no backward, from five, I cannot come back to three. From five, I cannot go back to four, from five, all I can do is go to six only. Can I come back to four from five? Only forward in M M, no backward. And this is strictly M M consultant activity, not your activity, who will do this?
M M consultant.
M M consultant will do, you will not do it. Tomorrow, even if somebody is asking strictly tell, in your project, this is always performed by M M, not by you. Don't tell in a generic. Related specific to your project title, in your current project, in your previous project. It was performed by or it was the responsibility of M M consultant, maybe outside, Fico also does, but in my project, it was the responsibility of M M. Sometimes people might put a tricky question, trying to confuse you, trying to check what is your level of confidence, but don't. Lose your confidence, don't make unnecessary mistakes, because somebody is pointing out on a specific per, question. Current period is five and you are looking at invoice posting. And here system is considering invoice date or posting date?
Posting date.
It is always based on the posting date, not based on the invoice date, okay? Now this error is coming. You will not be able to move forward until the period is open. First, what we need to do, can I book the invoice in period number five? Sorry, period number six?
No.
It has to be either in current period or it has to be in the previous period. It is neither in the current period nor in the previous period, six is not available anywhere, six twenty-five, am I correct? Error is valid or not?
Yes.
Error is valid, meaning even when you are doing any testing, just like that blindly, don't come here, don't open the periods, once you open, you cannot close it. If you open M M period, you cannot close it, because there is no reverse gear here, only forward, you cannot come back. And if this happens and it is done by a Fico consultant, if there is any consequences, you will be at a risk. First question will come, why did you do it when it is not your responsibility? Who told you M M period is opened by F I consultant? Things will go to a different level, things will get escalated, because when there is no problem, nothing will happen, when there is a problem, everybody will blame you, make sure you not entertain these points in your project. If you are doing it, do it, it is okay, but understand the impact. Make sure this is okay, no harm in it, it is correct only, then do it, nothing wrong in it, but you do not know blindly, you went, did it, something went wrong. You will be held responsible for it. Now, if I have to post the entry, there are two options, option number one, I need to change the posting date in my invoice. Option number two, open the period here, am I agree? Am I correct?
Yes.
Option number one, change the period here, option number two, change the date here. Now first I will not change the period here. I will try to change the date here. From five. Now this is giving a message, period six is adjusted, in line with posting date eleven five, enter. Enter, now, did you get any message? No, right? We did not get that pop-up, reason now period number is five. Period number five is currently, current period. If you want to open the period, where you should go?
M M P V.
You have to go to M M P V, in M M P V, same thing, give your company code. A P nine zero, and you should give the next period. It is enter the next period, including fiscal year, next period is what? Six.
Zero six.
Of year twenty twenty-five, press enter, always tick the first option, check and close period. And then click on execute, ensure. Yeah, that's it. And then execute it, when you do it, let's see what will happen. You got the log issued, log end. Check and close period, client hundred, period entered, month, year, six twenty twenty-five. To see whether it is updated properly or not, where you should go?
M M R V.
M M R V.
M M R V. Now to find out the table, put this. This, what is the table? This is a structure, there is no table. Come back and then you have to identify the table for this. Come back, S E sixteen N. Put this, you are not able to open this, because this is not a proper table. Come back, now go to M M R V. Enter. Now, is this changed or not changed?
Changed.
Earlier it was five four, now it is a six five, now you cannot go back, if I go to. M M P V, all I need to enter is next period only, there is no previous period, right? And there is no undo, by mistakenly opened, you cannot do anything, all you need to do is, take this. M M R V, if you do anything by mistakenly, take this, allow posting to previous period, that's it, beyond that, it is not in your hand, you will have to go to S A P. By mistakenly we did it, because you have inventory valuation, everything will be messed up if you open close periods. Just like that in the real environment, specifically logistics M M periods, don't play with it. Play the way you want with F I period, not with M M periods.
This is M M only, right? We don't have to do anything with this period.
No, M M only, but in some project, you may have to work on it, but you have to be conscious on these kind of areas. We should know the impact, what is to be done, what is not to be done, only then do it. Now, I will come back to this. Now I will close the screen, I will reopen it. Six, this one, now I will put current date, twenty-five thousand, purchase order. Are we expecting that period error or we are not expecting?
Not expecting.
We are not expecting, because period is already opened for accounting, for logistics also, M M side, press enter. No message, straight away you are getting this, and twenty-five thousand here, twenty-five thousand here. Press enter, these are all okay, and you are getting a error message, tax code V zero. In procedure, A Z D ten is invalid, system is checking, in the purchase order, there is a tax code called V zero. There is a tax code called V zero, this V zero, is this updated anywhere in the purchase order? Now from the invoice screen also, you can go to purchase order, below the purchase order, there is a underline or no underline? Yes.
Underline link is there.
There is an underline, meaning it is a hyperlink, drill down. Click on this. It is not allowing you to go inside, because there is a error message, it is stopping you here, not allowing you to go further, am I right? This is not opening, because there is a error message, error will not allow you to move forward.
Tax procedure is different.
Right, now I will go to purchase order, M E twenty-three N. Is this the right purchase order? Two eighty-three, this is the purchase order, tax code you will find in the invoice tab, if you go to invoice. In the invoice tab, at the time of purchase order, did we put any P O number, sorry, any tax code?
No.
No tax code, then from where system is bringing the tax code, if you remember, in the configuration, somewhere we updated, default tax code V zero.
Yes, so far as it.
Right, in the M M configuration, did you put a config where default tax code is updated or not?
Right, yes.
Yes.
From there, it is picking the tax code. Now, from there it is picking tax code V zero, and this tax code V zero is not valid in tax procedure A Z D ten. How this is coming, based on the company code, what is your company code? A P nine zero. This A P nine zero company code is connected to which country?
India.
Yeah.
India. Now you have to go to. Tax procedure assignment, tax procedure assignment, T code is what?
O B B G.
O B B G, go to O B B G. And your company code is related to India, go to position, pick country India. And for country India, at this moment, at the time of invoice booking, tax procedure is A Z D ten. In the training environment, in the practice server, people will frequently change this based on their practice. But when you are practicing, please make sure, at the time of your invoice booking, where you are updating the tax information. Only then look at this, otherwise whatever comes, just ignore it. Now currently, we need to book the invoice, you are getting the tax error, are we supposed to look at this setting or not? Now we are supposed to look at this setting, go to India, A Z D ten, tax procedure is not ours. What is the tax procedure which we created during our baseline config?
A P ninety.
A P ninety.
A P ninety, but in the real environment, in the project, it will be like A P ninety or it will be. Single tax procedure for the complete country, for all the company codes in a particular country. Single tax procedure, it is always Z A tax followed by country, Z A tax sign will be used. And this issue will not come in the real time, this issue will come only during the practice. So make sure you don't get unnecessary confusions here, am I clear?
Yes.
These errors, when you receive, don't get unnecessary confusions, don't think too much, these issues will not come in the project. Okay, put A P nine zero and then save it, come back, now when you save it. O B B G. If I try to make anything, for example. When I try to save it, this is giving this one. These are all the tables. Whenever you save any setting, are you able to see the view maintenance data, this is the table where data will be updated?
Yes.
Right, certain things are tables, certain things are structures, slowly we will be understanding it, close this, come back, cancel it. Now if I try to redo it, now to the country. India, which tax procedure is assigned, is this A Z D ten or it is now A P ninety?
A P ninety.
It is now A P ninety, what I will do, let me try to press enter. Now error is still A Z D ten, because system is not reading the revised data from the table. To read the revised data, what you should do, come out and then reopen?
Yes, sir.
Come back. Reopen, put the information, same data, twenty-five thousand, purchase order number, enter. Enter. Now what is the error message? Procedure is updated to A P nine zero?
Yes.
Yes.
Understood from where the system is picking these errors? Right, you will have to slowly understand when you are looking at the error message. Slowly you should think, okay, this is because of this, I have to check this, I have to check this, don't straight away go put it in Google. That is your last option, your first option is to ensure by looking at the error message, by looking at the screen, by looking at the. Transaction what user is posting, make sure you are in a position to understand what is happening. And why error is coming, as a consultant, what you need to check from your side. Sometimes you may be sitting along with your colleagues, do you go Google it? No, right? You will not Google when you are with your colleague, you will not Google when you are with your user, you will not Google it when you are sharing your screen, you need to ensure at least. Basic fundamentals you should know, at least to manage. Now, to fix this error, we need to do the tax configuration or not? Now the point where we are stuck is because of the tax. Am I right? As per our scenario, there is no tax, and you need to create the tax, to create the tax, system is expecting a tax code, system is telling. Tax code V zero in procedure, A P nine zero is invalid, now tax code is created in a T code called F T X P. If you go to F T X P, if you look at country India. If you go to F T X P, if you look at country India. Enter and there is a tax code, open the dropdown here. Anything is coming or nothing is coming?
Nothing is coming.
Nothing is coming, meaning currently for India, no tax code is created. Now system is picking the tax code. Based on the tax procedure that is assigned to the country at the time of your execution, am I right?
Yes.
Right, currently nothing is created, you need to ensure tax code is created. Now to create the tax code, we need to understand country specific tax information. When we say country specific tax information, we are now working on which country? Company code, India. Right, now if you write taxation. Now this taxation. Is this? Client specific? Or country specific? This is what? Country specific, not client specific, am I right? Right? Your client cannot say I want to tax like this. Your client must follow the legal regulations provided by the tax authority in this particular country. Yes or no? If you are working for Indian client and as per the Indian tax authority, whatever tax guidelines are there, the same tax guideline must be applied. By every company, they cannot change it, am I right?
Correct.
If you are working for Singapore, China, Dubai, any country, every country will have the tax rules and regulations. According to this, you have to set up. Now anything which is country specific, we call it as legal requirement. You also call it as localization. Are these points correct? Okay, your asset accounting, your taxation are part of country specific, legal requirement and then localization. Tomorrow somebody might ask, have you worked on any legal requirements? Have you worked on any localization object? Have you worked on any country specific requirement? Don't go blank, straight away tell, yes you worked on taxation, you worked on fixed asset. These two are legal requirements. Now. You have two types of taxes. One is your. Indirect taxation, second one is what?
Direct taxation.
Direct taxation. On your regular sales and purchases, what is applied indirect or direct majoritively?
Indirect.
Indirect tax. Now the case what we are referring to is this part of indirect or directed taxation?
Indirect taxation.
Indirect taxation. First we will focus on indirect taxation, later on we will focus on directed taxation. Okay, this is basically on. Purchases and the sales.
Yes.
Input tax and. Output tax. This, we will not look at at this moment because of avoiding confusion, we will say later on. Just remember, there is something called a directed taxation also, which we will see later on. At this moment, let us look at your indirect taxation, purchase and sales tax, in short, input tax output tax. Purchase tax is input tax, sales tax is output tax, is this right? This is correct, now. After writing. These points, let's write. Purchases and then let's write sales. One is your purchases. Two is your sales. Purchases, you call it as what? Input tax? Sales?
H C P will generate G S T reports like P B and G S T role like that or we need to integrate with other third party software.
Now standard reports are available, we are not referring to any specific country, we are trying to understand. S A P standard taxation. Okay logically. Okay, now when you are talking about purchases, first you need to understand how purchase will happen. Purchases are of two types, one is. Direct. Purchases. From F I module. Second one. Order based purchases from. M M model. Is this correct? Yes, no?
Yes, sir.
What about sales? Direct sales from. F I model, second one. Order based sales from. S T module. Now overall. There are. Three modules. Involved in. Sales and purchases, is this correct?
Yes.
What are those three modules? Okay. In any project. Taxation. Is part of. Three modules. Not just a five. Keep these points to clean your mind. Am I clear?
Yes.
Okay, for your taxation, F I config will be there, M M config will be there, S T config will be there. Not only F I consultant will set up the configuration of taxation, M M also will set up, S T also will set up. Any error that you are getting for F I related document, as a F I consultant, you are responsible. Any tax related error you are getting on the purchase order, M M consultant will check. Any error you are getting related to taxation on the sales order, S T consultant will check because on the taxation. Three module consultants are equally involved, am I right?
Yes.
And tomorrow when somebody is asking, don't blindly tell the whole configuration that you find in the Google. If you do not know, these three modules are involved for taxation. The other person can easily identify you did not work in taxation. First point, you need to understand this. Now. Only the lines that I listed are clear, right? Don't go in depth into it until I talk. Are these three lines clear?
Yes.
Now come down. Remember. Three procedures related to taxation. How many procedures?
Three procedures.
Three procedures. Point number one. Tax procedure, point number two. M M. Pricing procedure, point number three. S T pricing procedure. First. We will put F I tax procedure. This is responsibility of which consultant? F I consultant, this one? This one? Okay, now anything. Which is to work in the taxation, first point, this is to be set up. And whose responsibility is this?
All three consultant.
First one.
F I consultant.
This is your F I consultant, meaning we have to set this up. Okay, when you set this up, what you will do? In general, you create, let's say. Tax code. And the tax G L determination. You majoritively have to create tax code and then tax G L determination. If you look at the error. In this, you are getting an error called tax code V zero in procedure A P ninety is invalid. First mistake is what? First error is what? Tax code is not available, am I correct or not? Now who will create this tax code?
F I consultant.
F I consultant, T code to create a tax code.
F T X P.
Go to F T X P, it was India, put India, it was V zero, put V zero. I'm just creating it, just ignore what I'm doing it, okay? This is input tax, we will see later on, we will try to understand the problem first. Put this and then save this. Now tax code is created.
Yes.
Okay? Now if I come back, this error should not come.
Correct.
Come back. Go to Myrow one more time. Same information. This is okay. Twenty five thousand. Purchase order number. Now the error is gone.
Yes.
If you create the tax code, the error is gone. Now if I click on calculate tax, let's say, if I press enter. It is okay, no more errors are coming. When I am pressing enter, I am not getting any messages at the bottom, right? Meaning system is not prompting any messages. After creating a tax code, one error is gone, okay? Now is it red or green?
Red.
This is still, okay, meaning there is a problem, but it is not telling at the time of pressing enter, meaning your validation is okay. Click on simulate. If you click on simulate, how many line items the system is bringing? Two or one?
One.
Only one line item is coming, that is your vendor line item is coming and the other line item is not coming, okay? Go back. Now there is something called messages, click on the messages. Okay, if you look at the message, there are other errors. One error it is referring to, enter business place, okay? Another one is H S N S A C code is not determined. Now when you are, what transaction are you doing now?
Clearance.
Sale or purchase?
Purchase.
We are doing the purchase. Now your purchase can be material, physical good or it can be a service. Right, for any physical material, it must be H S N code. For any service, it is what? S A C code?
Yes, yes.
H S N for material, physical product, S A C for a service related product, am I correct? Okay, next one, account has been set as not relevant for tax. This is the G L account, it is telling, has been set for not relevant for tax. Okay, one more message, this G L account is. Not relevant for tax, okay? Eight double one zero one thousand. T code to check that G L account, F S zero zero? It's a takeover account we created here, asserted technical clearing account, go to display mode, control data. Do you have any tax controls here or it is blank? It is blank, okay? Now what I will put? I will put star, I will put this, okay? We will see it again, but now you do what? We will try to understand few points. Now this error is also okay. Third one. Next one, tax code country this does not exist in procedure A P nine zero, this is okay. Account determination, A P nine zero, W R X is not possible. What is W R X? G R I R account. This is G R I R account. The relevant transaction can be found in T zero three zero eight, this is the table for G R I R account, in short, T zero three zero. Okay, now out of these errors. We were able to fix this one. Eight double one zero one thousand?
Yes.
Okay. Let me re-enter the data. So that we will be familiar with the errors, what we are doing on this screen. Enter. Put the same amount twenty five thousand here. This is okay, try to simulate it. Now this is giving another message rate. Tax procedure is yours, is this message and previous message are same or they are different?
Same.
Not same. The previous message length was very short, right? It was still here only.
Okay, yes.
Now the text is big one. Am I correct?
Yes.
Okay, now this is different. Now it is telling tax code V zero. For country, region, India does not exist in procedure A P nine zero. Now it is talking about it does not exist in procedure A P nine zero, previously it was talking about. Tax code does not exist. Now it is telling tax procedure A P nine zero also, tax procedure T code. Tax procedure. O B Y Z or O B Q three, Q one, Q two, Q three. Go to procedure. Choose this. What was our procedure? A P nine zero, select your procedure, if you click on procedure control data. Did we maintain anything under this procedure or it is blank? It is blank. Your total taxation is based on the tax procedure from accounting point of view, from F I point of view. From F I point of view, your total tax setup is defined here. Under tax procedure, currently it is configured or not configured?
Not configured.
Not configured, you are getting error is valid. Right, we cannot expect the system to bring the tax, system to fix the tax error without creating the tax setup. We need to set up tax procedure first. This is one point. Which is related to F I consultant, meaning creating that a tax procedure O B Y Zed. Assigning that O B Y Zed to O B B G, creating a tax code, completing the G L account determination, we will do it. With this, your portion is completed in tax, F I task is over. And with this, you can create the tax code, you can create the invoice, you can create the. Credit memo and you can bring automatic attacks populated. Which all of you already did in the previous practice, where we did it without my screen sharing. Am I right?
Yes.
Right, within with with those simple four, five steps, you were able to bring tax or not automatically on your accounting?
Yes.
Right, that is what user F I, if you are able to bring F dash forty three tax, F dash twenty two tax, your tax is okay. From F I point of view. Because that is what you do accounting entry without purchase order, right? That is what you do accounting entry without sales order. Now tax is, tax will come on the invoice, on the credit memo. Now, tax is, tax will come on the invoice, on the credit memo, am I right?
Yes.
Sorry, tax will come on the invoice or on the credit memo, tax will not come on the down payment, tax will not come on the payment, am I correct? Your sales tax, purchase tax, in short, your indirect tax is applicable only on the invoice, only on the credit memo, is this right or wrong?
Sir.
Right.
Correct.
Right, it will come only on this, now from your FI point of view, you'll have to think from FI point of view, what kind of tax you will break, what kind of entry you will post, you will post only without purchase order, without sales order, F dash forty three, F dash twenty two, FB sixty, FB seventy, here if you are able to bring the tax, it is all done from your side. Meaning, tax code is properly set up, tax GL is also properly mapping, all these are coming from your tax procedure FI consulting setting. Now, if you wanted to set up tax, if you wanted to calculate the tax on the purchase order along with the first tax procedure defined by the FI consultant, there is one more tax procedure to be mapped at MM pricing procedure by the MM consultant, am I right?
Sir.
If MM consultant is configuring this on the purchase order, taxation will work. If MM consultant is not working on this, if MM consultant is not setting up this, on the purchase order, tax will not come. In short, on M I R O, tax will not come. Similarly, on the sales order, in the ST pricing procedure, who will have to do the mapping?
ST consultant.
ST consultant will have to do the mapping, otherwise on the sales order, when you create a billing document, tax will not come. Now, tell me, tax is only FI consultant task, FI MM ST three consultant task. It is strictly three consultant task, don't make a mistake in your interview and don't get unnecessary confusion because of not understanding the logics. Okay. Now, remember points till here, only till here you you remember. In the next session, which means in the tomorrow's session, we will configure FI tax procedure first and then we will create accounting entries for sales invoice, purchase invoice and then we will see how tax is getting calculated and then we will come back to MM tax again. Meaning, for us to fix this error, two points, point number one, we need to understand indirect taxation, how indirect tax is working in FI module and then we'll have to see how it is integrated with MM model and what you will do as a FI consultant in a project, what MM consultant will do in a project, agree? And we need to ensure, based on this, you will have a clarity, tomorrow when somebody is asking whether you worked on taxation, make sure you talk logical, practical points. Not simply you're explaining the config I worked, I did not work, will not work out. Especially in the project, you need to ensure whatever you are talking is completely practical. And forget about the country first, first focus on the SAP logic for the tax. How SAP is working, on what concept, on what base SAP tax is getting calculated? Once you are clear with this, now you pick the country where you are going to work. If you are going to work for India, understand how tax works in India. If you are going to work for Singapore, understand how tax is working in Singapore, if you are going to work for US, Canada or any other country, based on that particular country, you'll have to identify how tax is calculated here. What is the tax rate, what is included, what is excluded, what is exempted? All this information you will be provided by the client. Accordingly, you need to set up, but before that, understand SAP standard tax logic. And for every country, for the taxation, SAP provides SAP notes, SAP provides SAP KBS knowledge based article accordingly, you'll have to set up. Because it is SAP's responsibility to provide solution for taxation for every country. Any application that you take, this application provider will give this solution for it, it is not your innovative solution to give a solution for tax. The solution for taxation for every country is predefined in SAP and provided by SAP. And solution is given to consultant, any information, any solution, any communication, SAP to consultant is always based on SAP note, SAP knowledge based article, am I right? If SAP has to communicate anything to the consultant, how they will communicate, based on the SAP note? I will share one or two sample SAP note, I will share one or two sample KBS, if anybody has got instantly available, you can post it in the group. So that others will understand what is SAP note, how SAP note looks like. Similarly, what is knowledge based article, what is KBA, how it looks like? And these are all the updates given by SAP to the consultant. And you need to understand, tomorrow if somebody is asking, what do you mean by SAP note, what do you mean by SAP KBS? You need to ensure at least basic fundamentals you are able to talk. Instead of being quiet, you'll have to ensure at least some fundamental points we are able to talk. Okay, so let us stop this here now, on the taxation part, configuration we will discuss tomorrow, after that you will have a clarity on it. All right, bye.